Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. I'm Heather Pathley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's November 17th, 2020 regular meeting being conducted remotely where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council chambers will be called to order by Mayor Zielinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels 189 and 190 and available at manistetv.org. City Council and city staff will have video and audio available for this meeting and members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of City Council, the City Manager, City Attorney, City Attorney and City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. I just ask that you do please mute your own device if you do have any background noise. And Mayor Zielinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. We'll call the meeting to order. Please take the role.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Zielinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Here.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they wish to pass. It is very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll move on to the next person in line. We'll now take public comments. The meeting discussion topics for those who do not have an agenda are: Consent agenda items, approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next work session. Other agenda items include: Consideration of USDA APHIS Wildlife Services to hold a deer call in the City of Manistee in 2021. Consideration of coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant. Consideration of entering into an agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT. Consideration of pickup trucks for a purchase. City Clerk will now take over and accept public comments.
Telephone number ending in 4175. You have a comment or do you wish to pass? I'm not getting a response and they're not allowing me to... Oh, there they are.
Hello, Heather. This is Mark Miller from the chamber. I will pass this evening. Just wanted to listen and hope everyone's doing well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Right before the consent agenda, any member of the council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoice, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the agenda as the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the role.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Zielinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of the USDA APHIS Wildlife Services to hold a deer call in the City of Manistee in 2021 at a date to later be determined. The USDA APHIS Wildlife Services is requesting an agreement with the City of Manistee to be entered into for the purpose of holding a deer call in May 21 at a date to be specified in the future. Funds for the deer call in 2021 have been budgeted. However, an additional amount is being sought by the USDA APHIS Wildlife Services that more accurately represents the cost involved with holding a call. The amount previously budgeted for the call is $10,000 and the amount now being requested totals $15,500. At this time, council could take action to support and approve the request on USDA HPHIS Wildlife Services to hold a deer call in the City of Manistee in 2021 with the cost of the call totaling $15,500 subject to department approval. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Hearing none. Failed. Next. Consideration of the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant. The City of Manistee has been awarded $6,171 of CESF grant reimbursement funds through the Michigan State Police. These grants funds will reimburse most past and future qualifying purchases by the City, by the Manistee City Police Department related to preventing the spread of the coronavirus. Both the awards by the DOJ and the Michigan State Police and the grant contract with the MSP requires that the award be signed by an authorized official of the state, local, or tribal government. At this time, council could take action to authorize either the City Manager, Dad Taylor, or the Chief of Police, Josh Glass, to sign the contract as the authorized official for the City of Manistee. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions?
I just got a quick question. Is there other grants to apply for too for the fire department, the city department, or the police department? Or is it just this one?
This grant, Councilmember Sipsek, is for just materials to help prevent the spread of coronavirus. The city has applied for other grants to cover other things such as overtime wages. But this specific grant is just for materials to prevent the spread. It covers both purchases already made and future purchases totaling up to $6,100.
Okay. It just didn't seem like a lot of money, so I was just wondering if there was more.
Yeah, so what the state of Michigan did is it broke down every police department, so it's based on size.
Oh, okay.
The police departments, they have around the same number of officers we do. We receive the same amount of money, so it's broken down to a predetermined amount based on department size.
Okay.
Is this the only grant available that you know of?
I'm sorry, I'm starting to hear that.
Is this the only grant available that you're aware of at this time? Is there other grant funds out there?
Yeah, there are other grant funds that we're looking at. But this one is just specific to the police department. And Angie Rab is working on some other grants.
Any other questions? Hearing none, please take the role.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Mayor Zielinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into an agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation. The Michigan Department of Transportation is replacing the M-55 bridge over the Manistee River. The city has water and sewer mains attached to the existing bridge. The city is required to relocate the utilities to accommodate the new bridge. MDOT has designated the relocation and has bid the project. The engineer estimated is $309,000 and the city has set aside $400,000 for the project. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, please take the role.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Mayor Zielinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a pickup truck purchase. Motor pool budget includes the replacement of two pickup trucks. This item was presented before City Council in September of 2020 and was not approved. Since that time, one of the existing trucks, truck number 124, has been removed from service and requires replacement. Pricing for model year 2021 truck is now available and has increased over $3,500 over the 2020 models. Gornell Ford has a Michigan deals contract and has two stock 2020 trucks available for purchase. PW is requesting to replace truck number 124 and number 118 with the two 2020 trucks from Gornell Ford. At this time, council could take action to approve the purchase of two F-250 pickup trucks from Gornell Ford for $31,680 each. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Well, I have a question again. So I I don't understand why we need two trucks again if we have one that's coming that we ordered last year. We have the lift truck or whatever that needs to be fixed. Why can't we just purchase one truck, the other one's coming from last year, and fix that truck that needs to be fixed?
So if I can explain, we did replace a truck several months ago and that was a truck that was scheduled in last year's budget. And we took delivery of it in this year's budget, so that money just moved from last year to this year and that is completed. In the current budget, we have two trucks that we budgeted for replacement. Both of those trucks were priced on the 2020 MyDeal contract. And both of those trucks were, one truck was, would have been $26 over budget, the other one would have been $475 under budget. So we were in good position. What happened is we began the process to request council to approve ordering two new 2020 trucks that would have been at the prices that I just described. And Gornell Ford informed us that the production delays would not allow those to be ordered any longer. They could not fulfill, because of the COVID pandemic, they could not fulfill those orders before they switched over to the 2021 model year. What Gornell did was ordered in anticipation of this, they ordered several trucks of different colors but all about the same specifications that cities purchase. What I came to council in September and requested was that we buy two of those stock trucks off the lot at slightly more money than what we had budgeted. One would have been $680 more, the other would have been $1,680 more in anticipation that those trucks would be needed for this year. When council did not approve that, we just continued to use the two old trucks. One of them, we've had to take out of service because the repairs required are almost twice what the current value is and they're currently not safe to drive. Also, the 2021 prices are now available through MyDeal and we just received those several weeks ago. And because of the shortage of trucks and the demand across the country, the price of those trucks have gone up over $3,500. So when I spoke to the City Manager about this, we weren't sure whether we should ask for two trucks right now or one. But I have a need to replace one truck that's out of service right now and we can still buy that, the truck that was on the lot in September, Gornell Ford still has that available. So we would not incur that additional $3,500 in cost. The second item is, we've got a truck that is ready to be replaced this year also. But if I wait any longer until that truck malfunctions or needs major repairs again, we're going to add another $3,500 onto that cost. So I think it is fiscally responsible to purchase two trucks now and not risk that extra expense. And those trucks, again, they're used on a daily basis. They're not sitting around waiting for anything.
But didn't you say back in September that you had a truck that needed to be fixed? Like, I can't remember exactly what the truck was, like a sewer truck or something that was ultimately gonna need to be fixed, which is a huge expense.
We have a, yes, we have in the budget, another truck, which is a it's a truck with a utility box on it and it has a crane for pulling pumps at our pump stations and that's a separate item. And we are preparing that for, I believe, we're going to try to get it on the next agenda item because we just got all our final pricing in on that truck. So that's a totally separate truck in the wastewater department. The two trucks that I'm requesting tonight, one is in the street department and one is in the water department is where these trucks would go.
Okay, I guess my thought process is spending all that money on the trucks when you need trucks to be repaired. You have, you know, less employees now than you did in the summertime. So I still don't understand why you can't get away with two new trucks this year when you just got the one from last year.
Yeah, and I should have brought this up when we discussed that in September. We actually have the same amount of employees. This is a pretty unique thing for this year, but we still have several of our seasonal employees that are still working for us. And because we were working the split shifts due to the COVID issue, most of the guys didn't take any vacation through the beginning of this year. And a lot of the guys are using that vacation up right now and taking advantage of hunting season. So we've kept those summer employees on. But the biggest thing is from May 1st through October 31st, we have six bridge tenders in the street department that are on the bridges and they don't use those vehicles. Right now, they are all back at the garage and they are utilizing those vehicles. So even though we lost some of our summer help, we still moved six people back into the street department and, which still creates the demand on using those pickup trucks. Also, one of these trucks will be mounting a snowplow too, and so that gets used all through the winter just for snow plowing at a minimum.
Okay. I mean, I do, I'm not trying to be a pain. I do understand the need for purchasing new trucks. I just, my thought process on it now is that's a huge expense, plus you have trucks that need to be fixed. Plus, you still have a fleet of cars that need to be auctioned off, so I just, I'm trying to offset money somewhere. So it makes sense in my head, if that makes sense to you?
It does, and I don't have any issue with council asking questions. I think providing the information is very crucial. And like we tried, Ed Bradford and I tried to explain before, we have worked with, well, it was Chief Bachman and Ed and I worked and really cleaned up this motor pool. We created a 20-year forecast for all of this equipment. And now we're working with Josh and Chief Cameron to make sure that we spread this money out, spread these purchases out, and try to extend the life of these vehicles just as far as we can. And almost every vehicle that we've replaced in the last year and a half has died or been taken out of service just before the new vehicles arrive. So we are literally using these to the maximum.
Okay, I got one more question, then I'll be done.
Sure.
Do you have to purchase a 2021 truck? I mean, aren't there trucks that are older models but, you know, haven't been used? Like, you know what I mean, like sitting on the lot or whatever that you could purchase at a cheaper price?
Yeah, so first thing is, when we purchased through MyDeal, these trucks are just rough numbers. Say they're 30 grand. If any one of us in this meeting went to buy that truck from a dealership, you'd be paying probably 40,000 and more or more for those. So we already get a heck of a deal just by purchasing through the state of Michigan contract. And they bid these, they bid out a lot of different items, but they bid these things out every single year. And for the past probably six, seven years, we've been taking advantage of that state contract. The other thing is, you know, it obviously comes with a warranty when we buy them new. And we've looked and there's not a lot of trucks that meet our needs. We don't get anything fancy on these except for the municipal safety lighting package on them and make sure that they've got the towing package. Most other vehicles that are built have a lot more amenities on them and options on them. So I think this is the best way to purchase these vehicles.
Okay, I'm done. I'm done with any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Grubowski here. I went down and looked at these trucks with Jeff back in September, I believe. And you really need some trucks. Those were in pretty rough shape. They're done for. So I think we need to get some trucks for them.
Yeah, with all due respect, it's not just the, I mean, they're pretty beat up, but it's the mechanical issues. And I sit with the mechanic in our budgeting process and with the lead men and go through each of the trucks and we will adjust those year to year. If one truck is still doing really good and it was scheduled for replacement, we'll hold off on that a year or two if we can. And if one truck is having some issues or having some engine transmission issues, then we start moving those forward because those repairs are just too expensive for what the values of them are.
Yep. My experience with motor pools with the Department of Defense is that you replace 15% of your fleet every year and you budget for that so that you don't have vehicles that are worthless at the end of their life cycle. You actually financially and economically and from a safety factor do much better if you replace regularly rather than waiting until they're broken down. They're almost worthless once they get to the point where it costs more to repair them. Whereas if you're recycling them at an appropriate time, they become more cost-effective as far as maintaining your fleet. And the government, I think, uses 15% or about six and a half years per vehicle.
Yeah, and if I can respond to that, that's where we would like to get with all of our motor pool. And I don't think we'll be able to get there. So we are, if we replace two pickup trucks a year, that would be 10%. And we would have to replace one of our plow trucks. The police cars have to be replaced much more often. Not necessarily due to mileage, but just from the engine hours that are on them. So that's a goal that we've set, but we're still behind that curve.
Any other comment?
Here, I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just had similar questions to what Councilmember Sipsek had and I didn't understand the two versus, or instead of one. But I gotta say, Jeff answered my question that I had and I'm comfortable with his answer and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, please take the role.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Zielinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Heather, we have no students to set Mac and he didn't want to make any comments. He just wanted to listen. Do we want to move on to officials and staff?
I just have one that just came in, so let me check and see, okay? I just need to rename. Let it go. They left. They were here and they left, so I guess we're all set.
Please. You want to take over? Go ahead, please.
You want me to go? Okay. City Manager.
Nothing at this time.
City Attorney.
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Police Chief.
I have nothing, Heather. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Fire Chief.
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Finance Director.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
DPW.
I just have one item. Sean Middleton has put together some slides and I think he's going to try to share a screen and talk through them. But generally, we just wanted to give a quick update because we've been tracking trends at the wastewater treatment plant. We've obviously been tracking them for a number of years. But over the past six to eight months, the work that we're doing, the line sewers and the other work that we're doing is starting to show a positive impact on the flows at the plant. Sean, are you able to share your screen? Heather, did you guys get that worked out?
We did, yeah.
Okay. Oh, here it comes.
It just takes a second.
Okay, so I'll let Sean walk through these individual slides. But generally, what we wanted to show is that, number one, the lake levels continue to rise this year and that are at an all-time high. We had a lot less precipitation this year, but we're showing signs that are that the flows to the plant are starting to reduce on a daily basis, but more importantly, during storms. And Sean, if you could just kind of talk through a few of these slides, it's a lot of information, but he could kind of point out some of the trends to you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Like Jeff said, I guess, you know, if Ed asked us to do a quick, just a quick update on, you know, what we're seeing at the treatment plant and during SSO events as well. And so what we have is we've got data from the plant. We collect data from the city ed's group in terms of how much water is actually being generated. And we can compare all that to determine how much estimated INIs in the system. So this graph, I guess, just I have in front of you here, the blue lines, the blue boxes are the wastewater treatment plant flow. This is per year, so this is annual basis in million gallons. The green represents our estimated INI in the system that we've seen. And then the yellow is actual SSO events that have occurred at SSO 18, the total for the year. And across the bottom is the number, you know, years. So this is going all the way back to 2012. By 2015, we started monitoring at a pretty high level, so it's a little more guesstimating before that. In terms of the left-hand side's total flow in million gallons and the right-hand side's elevation. So like Jeff said, the lake level's been steadily going up. This is an average for 2020, so we have turned and started to head back down. I'll show you that on a monthly graph. But to Jeff's point, in 1920, you can see our trend is going back in the right direction when it comes to INI and SSO events. That's especially encouraging since the lake levels were actually going up. We're kind of bucking that trend with the lake levels. I'm going to switch to. But when we switch to precipitation, But when we switch to precipitation, um, you know, we've probably got to take some of the credit away a little bit because our precipitation in twenty twenty is down. These blue dots are the average annual rainfall we're seeing. So we still got, you know, obviously these are the same lines below um, showing the trends at the plant and, and SSO events. But we've got, we do have significantly less rain, so. So there's a little caveat we want to throw in that there is less rain, but in general, it's been very positive. Um, you know, in twenty nineteen, we, the, what, the lakes were so high that we did see some inflow from over the weir. And we raised the weir, if you recall, last year, so that, that's also helped to keep, you know, keep some inflow out of the system.
Sean, if I could just make another point, the uh, even though the rainfall has diminished this year, the overall rainfall. What we've noticed over the summer, though, is that during our storm events, which normally would have triggered an SSO. Um, we haven't had them, and the one that we had uh, last month was very, very small. So it's not a conclusive data site yet, but we're, we're becoming very encouraged. And um, and we still have more lining to go, so it's going in the right direction.
So these, this next graph is pretty much very similar, um, but it's broken down by month and only goes back to January of eighteen. So it gets into a little more of the details um, on a monthly basis, which is, this is where we've been. Uh, most cautiously optimistic, I guess. Um, again, the blue line's the lake level. So you can see, you know, it peaked out in June, July. Now it's, now we've been on the downward trend as we happen, you know, kind of head into the normal cycle with the lakes. But um, now we started doing the pilot lining project last year and really got into doing that work. Um, you know, in the spring of this year. And at the same time, uh, Jeff's group and Rick have been doing a lot trying to knock on doors last year to find INI and eliminate it. So again, on a monthly basis, we're just seeing a nice steady trend downward. Um, that is kind of bucking the trend of the lake levels. Similar uh, with um, rainfall, which is a lot more sporadic when you. You know, we're, if you look at the rainfall here versus a year ago, there's definitely some higher months, but. Um, even though it's higher, it's still not um, or lower than the previous years, it's not significantly lower. It's, you know, it's kind of in line, so. Again, we're cautiously optimistic, um, you know, with this data. And wanted to share it, uh, we can, and we can, if you got questions, we can come back to these, but just for your time sake, I'll keep kind of pushing through. This, this graph's a totally uh, a different look at things. Um, we've had fifty-two SSO events. Since we were really monitoring closely um, with our transducers at the SSO eighteen. So the, this one is showing the size of the SSO event on this axis in million gallons. And then across the bottoms, the precipitation. And the red line is six million gallons, and the reason that's important is because that's what we're proposing to put in for storage at the treatment plant with our proposed improvements. This green line is, represents three point nine inches of rain, which sounds pretty random, but that is, that's what uh, the Eagle is requiring us to design to. We have to say twenty-five-year recurrence event, recurrence event during the growing season. Um, and they do that to kind of reduce the burden on municipalities. Because in the winter, when you get an inch of rain versus an inch in the summer, it's, there's a lot more runoff and you have a lot more impacts. Uh, but we don't have the luxury of it not raining in the winters, so we'll kind of plan for that. Um. So you can kind of see how the majority of the storms are really concentrated. It's, it's just on a rare occasion where we get either a big rain event, or actually a lot of cases, big snow melt events. If you look at this left-hand side, you know, we're talking very small amounts of rain. Uh, generating, you know, in these cases, small SSOs, but some, some bigger ones too. And those are when we have a lot of snowpack, the ground saturated, and it just warms up for a week. And we're, in the whole entire city is releasing water at a constant rate into the system. I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep moving through here. We can always come back to any of these. Um, this is another one I think is just kind of interesting to see, and it gets to Jeff's point. Is, you know, back since two thousand and fifteen, we've been monitoring, monitoring these events. And this is chronological, so this is actually the order of SSOs we've been seeing. And though we do got some outliers that happened, you know, this general overall trend has been in smaller events. Um, uh, smaller volume events, and actually a little reduction in the frequency of them. Has been steadily happening over the last several years, so. Again, cautiously optimistic, but it's a popular trend um, in the events.
Is the blue line art, again, the six million gallons?
Yep, that's a six million gallons, and so all of these would be fully captured. Um, it's probably worth noting, you know, the question I'm sure somebody might be asking is, okay. If we can capture these and run them back to the plant, that's great. What about the three or four that are floating out here? So when we get a really big event, um, we can't design for everything, and they happen. Um, if we did, you, you know, it's a very expensive project as it is, and it would be completely financially impossible if we were trying to design for all events. What's gonna happen instead with these events, which normally would have just filled up over the weir and direct, dumped directly into the lake. As basically raw diluted sewage. Um, we're gonna be taking that water, it's gonna come to the, the new headworks of the building. It'll pass through screening, and then it'll be pumped into the tanks, and they're pumped into the tanks from the bottom. And then we kind of decant the water off the top, so. As we bring water into the first tank, it's pulled off the top, so there's settling that occurs. That water goes into the next tank, to the bottom of the next tank, and is pulled off the top. And then, and then through the third tank. So we're, we're doing an immense amount of settling of that um. Of the wastewater. In addition, the way we pull it off the top is below the surface, so any floatables kind of get uh, trapped as well. So then that water would eventually would need to discharge to the lake because we just can't store it or treat it. Um, at that, at the very endpoint, um, we chlorinate it. And so we're gonna chlorinate that water uh, before it goes into the lake. Um, so we're gonna go through basically all the primary cleaning that a normal treatment plant has, and we disinfect at the end. The only thing we're not doing is the biological process uh, that happens. And that takes time, so we just, we can't do that during an event, but um. It'll be significantly improved water quality going into the lake even during an event, and you can see we're gonna capture most of them. The other thing I'll just make a point on is. Every time we reduce the volume going into the system, you know, by finding a legal connection or fixing a pipe. Is, it's kind of increasing what we call our basis of design. We can capture more and more of these greater events and more of them and treat it. Um, you know, eventually, we'd love to get to the point where we say we don't need uh, storage. That's gonna be a long time coming before it happens. But every time we take care of something, we're reducing costs at the plant, we're reducing overflows. And um, and maybe we can even utilize some of these tanks in the future for some other purpose. Uh, real quick, just to show you some of the things we're doing, uh, this is a classic city of majesty. Uh, previously combined sewer man, manhole, now it's a sanitary manhole. Couple key things to point out. You see these four pipes coming in? These go right to the corners of an intersection. These used to be catch basins that brought water directly into the city's uh, manholes. Those have all since been plugged off. They're bulk headed. You can't quite see in this picture, and so they don't directly discharge here anymore. Um, but if you look closely, what happens in these old brick structures is the water still finds its way there. You can see it has discoloration. Below these inlets, that's stormwater during events that kind of seeps through the ground and seeps through the cracks in these. Manholes and then makes its way into the structures and into the, now the sanitary sewer system. And onto the plant treating water we don't need to treat. So we've lined these. This is the same manhole. Um, and we've sealed off all the bricks, all the pipes. The bottom sealed off. A lot of these manholes have, the bottoms are gone, so water will seep in through the bottom as well. And so we've completely isolated um, that water from the, from the system. And, you know, these have, you know, uh, they're guaranteed out twenty years, and they're probably gonna be fifty-year design life um. On these structures, so not only are we stopping uh, infiltration, we're really, the structural integrity of these are greatly improved. Um, and at the same time, we're fixing the, the chimney or the top part and the frames and cover, so. Um, though it's not a brand-new concrete manhole, it's serving kind of similar purpose. Um, I'm gonna go through the pipes real quick. Um, this mess here, what you're seeing is a lot of root intrusion. And if roots can get into the pipe, that means water's certainly getting into the pipes. Once it's cleaned, um, this is what these pipes look like, uh, after we line them with the, the liner. At basically the brand-new PVC pipe. Um, that's definitely a solid fifty-year design. Um, and so we're improving it structurally, but we're also improving it, uh, we're getting rid of the INI. Um, one more pipe just like that. I just wanted to point out. This, what we call uh, um, incrustation, incrustation or deposits. This is literally like a stalactite you would see in a, in a cave. So the only way these form is if water's dripping into the pipe. So water's been coming into these pipes for a very long time to, this is all hard as rock, all this material. It forms from the calcium that comes out of water, so we know these have been very leaky for a very, very long time. Um, we went through, cleaned these pipes. Again, this is uh, that same pipe um, after it's lined, so. We're, this project's gonna line roughly ten percent of the system's pipes and ten percent of the system's manholes. But we really have focused on the worst condition and the leakiest one, so we're hoping to get a little ba- bigger bang for our buck, um, because we're focusing on the worst areas. So with that, I'll just turn it over to some questions or discussion. Just, I'm gonna give you, you know, a quick update on what we're doing.
Thank you, Sean. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one. If we're looking at this being uh, ten percent, what's the plan for the other ninety percent?
We've had internal discussions on that already, because, you know, it, as you're aware, we have a, you know, a transportation improvement plan, and there's a capital improvement plan. And uh, we talked about life beyond Saw when we did the grant. Now we'll have life beyond RD. Um, we know that we need to develop some kind of a plan for televising, cleaning, and lining. And it really is gonna become a function of costs as to what the city can afford to do, but we'd love to be in a program where we're doing some of these every year and picking away. Um, with time. Uh, we don't have the dollars that, you know, we have for this project, but um. We do have prioritization of all the sewers and the manholes, you know, looking at the worst ones, the worst ones with the worst INI. So we know where we want to go next. Um, it's really trying to figure out that long term, which we, I guess we'd call it a program. Where we're every year trying to pick away at them.
So let me uh, add to that. This is uh, Chuck McCula. We um, we've talked a lot about how we have an asset management program for our street system. And this is really falls under the same, same thing. We're developing asset management programs for our stormwater, sanitary, for the water system. All the buildings that the city owns, uh, our parking lots. And so really, um, it becomes prioritizing the needs of the assets. And then the available funding and trying to leverage as much of that stuff together as we can. Um, the five miles that we did or are, have completed this summer. Were prioritized specifically to try to get the most water out of the system as we can. Um, after all the uh, data gathering that we've done for the past five years. Mayor Zalinski, if, if we're done with this item, I, I just have, I guess, one other update. Um, we started the uh, leaf pickup a week and a half ago, and. Normally, our goal is to get one pass through the entire city each week. Uh, as it turned out this year, we made really good progress uh, the first couple days, and then. The weather got super nice. It was in the sixties. All the leaves came to the ground. And so much went out into the streets that we just completed um, one full pass of the city yesterday. So uh, we're back on the north side and, and beginning our second pass, but. Um, we get a lot of phone calls from residents wondering if we're done, if we're coming back, if they still have time. Um, so we will still keep working on this uh, through the first week in December. Um, or until the snow flies, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Want to continue, Heather? Do you want me to?
Yes, uh, it's up to you. Would you like me to continue? Councilmember Bachman. Councilmember Sipsick.
Um, I just have a question about the blight, if we're gonna get an updated blight report.
Certainly, I can send one out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes, uh, but I'd like to know uh, from either Jeff or the city manager. Are we gonna do anything with, with that car went in? Are we gonna put a pole in down there to prevent further incidents like this, or? Uh, don't you consider we're gonna have too many of them?
Um, I'm, I've, I've talked with the chief about that. And that's gonna be something he's gonna compile. He's taken a look at all aspects of that um, incident. And so he'll be providing some recommendations on what, if anything, we need to do at that particular location, so that, that is in our thought process.
Okay, uh, the second thing is that, uh, when I was at the garage and talked with Jeff, he said he had given you a list of all the trucks he had. Can we get a list of all that, uh, so the council people can look that over when we have to vote on these things?
Yeah, if we can get you, uh, Jeff, if you can just get that to me or Kelly, and we'll get it pushed out.
Okay.
And the last thing then is, are, are we gonna award Van Sickle any kind of award for saving that lady in the, in the uh, bar when, when it was burning?
I, I can answer that, sir. We have an awards committee between the police and fire departments, and they're, it's a three-man committee. And they look at every time there's a recommendation. I believe they're gonna recommend accommodation in that case. So I think something's coming, certainly.
Good, thanks a lot.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
I've got nothing. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Uh, I got a couple of things. Uh, do we have to bring something to council to go back to allowing um, this. Downtown area to have uh, reserved spaces for um. Takeout and pickup in front of the restaurants? Uh, because I think, again, since we're going back into uh, them being closed for uh, in the. In-house uh, dining, I think it would be uh, helpful to them to be able to have reserved parking in front of their facilities. I know that the mayor talked about two spaces in front of each restaurant, and I think that would be a good idea. The question is, do we have to have that go through council, or could we, since we've already done this during the, the last time they were shut down? Could we just go ahead and, and uh, make that happen?
Yes, we can make it happen. Uh, that's gonna be coordinated through uh, Chief Glass and also Mark Miller from the chamber. Um, he works, you know, they work with the downtown merchants and they'll decide who might benefit from it, and uh, he'll get with Chief Glass.
Great. Also, is it possible to bring the, the deer call issue to a work session? Um, I, you know, again, we do have a problem. I would like, you know, some more data. I know that we've had deer strikes in the city. It'd be interesting, you know, or helpful to know how many that we've had. Uh, and, and, you know, get an idea of what the real cost of all those deer strikes have been to our community. Uh, um, I, you know, again, I think that one of the reasons why is that we agreed on a, on a price. And it, you know, doubled this last year, uh, or went up fifty percent uh, from the previous year. But there's still an issue that I think we need to address.
There, there's no problem with getting it on a work session. It'll probably gonna be after the first of the year. Um, because we're pretty booked in, in um, yet, in this month and in December, so probably sometime in January or February. Is that gonna be timely enough?
Um.
That's kind of late for a deer call.
Yep. If we could do it earlier, that would be great if we could fit it in.
We'll, we'll make it fit in December then.
Okay. And then lastly is, you know, again, I saw those pictures about all the, the uh, tree root uh, intrusion into our sewer line. And then lastly is, you know, again, I saw those pictures about all the tree root intrusion into our sewer lines. And I had a citizen comment to me that they have the same problem with their sewers going into their homes. And it's based on trees that are on public property. And when they've asked for them, the trees to be addressed by the tree commission, basically, the tree commission philosophy is that if the tree is not diseased, it stays. But again, as you could see, they can do a lot of damage, and I think that we should probably address having some mitigation for trees that are causing significant damage to our sewers as well as the sewers going into people's homes. Just don't know how we get, you know, kind of get the dialogue started on that. But, you know, obviously, it's a problem for not only the citizens, but the city as well. And that's all I have.
Mayor Zalinski.
Thank you. I just have one thing. I would like to like to thank Josh Glass and all the departments that were involved in that incident. The professionalism and coordination was exceptional. I spent some time watching and being involved in that type of a rescue in the past, my past life. I was pretty impressed with how everybody worked together to accomplish what they did. Also, my condolences go out to the families of those people who lost their life. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day, great evening, and stay healthy.